राम राम हरे हरे ओम ज्ञान तिम्रंदस्य ज्ञानांचना शलाखाया चक्षुरुण मिलितम् येना तस्मे श्री गुरवेन नमः श्री जय धन्यमनो विष्टम् स्थापितम् येन भूतले स्वयं रूप गदामयं ददातीश्व पदांतिकम् वंदे हम श्री गुरु श्री तपतकमलम् श्री गुरुण वैष्णवाम् श्च श्री रूपम् साग्रजातम् सहगणरगुणातान्वितम् तम् सजीवम् साधवेतम् सावधूतम् परिजना सहितम् श्री कृष्ण जयतन्य देवम् श्री राधा कृष्ण पादान् सहगणललिता श्री विशाकान्वितम् श्च नमो मिष्णु पादाया कृष्ण पृष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमदेव वक्ति वेदांत स्वामी नितिनामिने नमस्ते सारस्वदेवे देवे गौरवाणी प्रचारिने निर्विचेष शुन्यवादी आश्चात्य देश तारिने जय श्री कृष्ण जयतन्या प्रभु नित्यनंदा श्री अद्वैत कदाधार श्रीवासाधिगौर वक्त विन्दा हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा कृष्ण कृष्णा हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा राम रामा हरे हरे पुरेवे गौर चंद्राय राधिगाय तरालिए कृष्णाय कृष्ण बक्ताय तत्बक्ताय नमो नमः मूकम् करोति वाचालम् पंगुम् लंगय देगिरिम्यत् क्रपातम् हम्म वंदे श्री गुरुण देनतारिनम् प्रमाणंदमादवम् श्री कृष्ण जयतन्य ईश्वरम् हरि हो तस हरे कृष्णा सुदंडव प्रणाम तो ऑल डी डोटीज टुडे इस 15th ऑफ अगेस्ट टुडे इस इंडिपेंडेंस डे इन इंडिया राइट सो आई एम जस्ट रिमेंबरिंग ना डी फर्स्ट कन्वर्सेशन ना बिटवीन ना शिला प्रोपाद इंस्ट्रूल बक्तिसिद्धांत सरस्वती चाकुर प्रोपाद आस्ट बक्तिसिद्धांत जिस राइट हु इस गोइंग तू अंडरस्टैंड ना वर कृष्णा कॉन्शियेन्स मैसेज वर कंट्री इस रोल विद डी ब्रिटिश एंड बक्तिसिद्धांत सरस्वती चाकुर तोल प्रोपाद वर कृष्णा कॉन्शियेन्स इस सो अर्जेंट एंड इंपॉर्टेंट डेट इट कैन नॉट वेट फॉर एनी चेंज ऑफ रूल एंड प्रोपाद मेंशन्स आर डी एंड ऑफ डी चैप्टर ना प्रोपाद मेंशन्स आई वस इट वस सो आई वस फीलिंग सो ब्लिस्फुल बीइंग डिफिटेड बाय माय स्पिरिचुअल मास्टर सो व्हाट इस रियल इंडिपेंडेंस रियल इंडिपेंडेंस मींस ना तू बी कंप्लीटली डिपेंडेंट हम ऑन डी मर्शियर डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गोदहेड ना तू बी यू डू यूटिलाइज अवर फ्रीविल इन डी राइट वे हम सो डेट बी बिकम इंडिपेंडेंट ऑफ डी थ्री मोड्स ऑफ मैटेरियल निचर बी गो बैक ओम बैक तू गोदेड डेट इस रियल इंडिपेंडेंस राइट एंड तू गेट डेट इंडिपेंडेंस व्हाट आई वस सपोज तू डू बी आई वस सपोज तू लिसन तू गुरु हं साधु एंड शास्त्रा स्टडी बघवत गीता इसेंट इट सो ना वेरी वंडरफुल टुडे इस डे 29th सेकंड लास्ट डे ऑफ पुरुषोत्तम अधिकमास सो वेरी वेरी डिलाइटफुल ना डेट यू नो बी बीन एबल तू डू दिस फॉर 29th डेज बाय डी मर्शियर गुरु एंड गोरंगा एंड टुमारो इस लास्ट डे सो ना टुमारो बी विल डू अन लिटिल अर्ली ना टुमारो बी विल आई विल लेट यू नो बट बी विल डू इट अन लिटिल अर्ली टुमारो या सो ना आई विल लेट यू नो आर डी एंड ऑफ डी सेशन ना व्हेन मोस्ट ऑफ डी पीपल आर डेट बी विल टेक अन पोल एंड दें बी विल ट्री डू डेट ऑलरेडी ना लेट्स जंप इन तू आवर डिस्कशन ऑन डी 29th डे ऑफ पुरुषोत्तम अधिकमास डी सेकंड लास्ट डे ऑफ डी सेल ऑफ ना मर्शी हम मोर मर्शी विथ लेविथ ना डी सेम नंबर ऑफ राउंड्स बी गेट मोर मर्शी डी सेम लेवल ऑफ यरिंग बी गेट मोर मर्शी सो लेट्स यूटिलाइज 29th डे 30th डे एंड दें कंटिन्यू विथ दिस ना विथ डी जेस्ट एंड ना ना एंथूजियासम एंड परफॉर्मिंग डेवोशनल सर्विस फॉर प्लेशर ऑफ गुरु एंड गोरंगा सो फर्स्ट बी विल स्टार्ट विथ ना डी चांटिंग ऑफ डी हरे कृष्ण महामंत्र विथ शिला प्रोपाद नमो मिष्णु पादाया कृष्ण पृष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमदेव वक्ति वेदांत स्वामी नितिनामिने नमस्ते सारस्वदेवे देवे गौरवाणी प्रचारिने निर्विचेष शुन्यवादी आश्चात्य देश तारिने जय श्री कृष्ण जयतन्या प्रभु नित्यनंदा श्री अद्वैत कदाधार श्रीवासाधिगौर वक्त विन्दा हरे कृष्ण हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे
श्री कृष्ण जयतन्य तबिनी तानंद श्री अद्वैत कदाधार श्रीवासाधिगौर वक्त हरे कृष्ण हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे 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 कृष्ण हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे हरे
जय कृष्ण जय कृष्ण जय राम हरे कृष्ण हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे हरे कृष्ण कृष्ण हरे हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे हरे कृष्ण 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 हरे हरे नमो मिष्णु पादाया कृष्ण पृष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमदेव वक्ति वेदांत स्वामी मिष्णु प्रोपाद कीजिए जन्मयां कीजिए अन्नयां कीजिए बक्तिदेवी कीजिए दुर्विच्छिमा राणी कीजिए सामित वक्त विन्द कीजिए कलियोगभादी द्वारा आवन हरे कृष्ण महामंत्र कीजिए श्री राधा कृष्ण गोपकोपिनाथ शामकुंडा राधा कुंडगिरिवर्तन कीजिए मत्रा आदम कीजिए वृंदावन दाम कीजिए मायपुर नफ़्तीवताम कीजिए पुरुषोत्तम एक्षेत्र जिज्ञानात्मक दाम कीजिए अनंत कोचिक और वक्त विन्द कीजिए सामित वक्त विन्द कीजिए ऑल गॉडीज जसमल डिब्बूजी सरेकृष्णा ऑल गॉडीज जसमल डिब्बूजी सरेकृष्णा ऑल गॉडीज जसमल डिब्बूजी सरेकृष्णा ऑल गॉडीज ऑल गॉडीज ऑल गॉडीज श्री श्री गुरु एंड श्री गोरंगा शिला प्रोपाद कीजिए हरे कृष्णा सो दंडवर प्रणाम तो ऑल डी डोटीज थैंक यू फॉर जॉनिंग एंड फॉर डे 29th ऑफ पुरुषोत्तम अधिकमास टुमारो इस लास्ट डे ऑफ पुरुषोत्तम अधिकमास एंड बी विल टॉकिंग अबाउट हाउ बाय डी ग्रेज ऑफ गुरु एंड गोरंगा बी विल गोइंग तू 29th डेज टुडे इस 29th डे 28th डेज ऑफ डीज स्पेशल प्रेयर सेशन फॉर डी एक्सलूसिव प्लेशर ऑफ गुरु एंड गोरंगा एंड टुडे वस इंडिपेंडेंस डे बी विल बी विल डिसकस्टिंग इन डी ब्रह्ममुर्ता सेशन राइट व्हाट इस रियल इंडिपेंडेंस राइट रियल इंडिपेंडेंस मींस बीइंग डिपेंडेंट ऑन डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गोदेड टेकिंग शेल्टर डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गोदेड बिकमिंग इंडिपेंडेंट हम ना मींस ना बीइंग ना एक्सीक्यूडिंग डी राइट फ्री विल राइट डी राइट चीज बी आए अन चॉइस बी आए अन फ्री विल बीइंग ना माइन्यूट पार्स एंड पार्सल्स ऑफ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गोदेड ना कृष्णा इस गिवन अस डी माइन्यूट इंडिपेंडेंस हम हाउ आई विल गोइंग तू यूटिलाइज डीज इंडिपेंडेंस ना डेट डिपेंड्स ऑन व्हेयर वेयर बी विल अटेन डी रियल इंडिपेंडेंस विच मींस तू गेट डॉट ऑफ डी क्लचेस ऑफ मैटेरियल निचर एंड दें गो बैक ओम बैक तू गोदहेड राइट इफ बी नीड तू गेट डेट इंडिपेंडेंस दें बी आयू तू एक्सरसाइज अवर इंडिपेंडेंस इन अकॉर्डेंस विथ गुरु साधु एंड शास्त्रा हम एंड हाउ डू बी अंडरस्टैंड डेट डेट इस व्हाट बी अंडरस्टैंड बाय स्टडींग शिला प्रोपाद जी बुक्स डेट इस व्हाट बी अंडरस्टैंडिंग बिस्कुम बाय स्टडींग बघवत गीता भागवत तमचेतन चरिता मृत्यु एंड ऑल दिस वंडरफुल स्क्रिप्चर्स ना वेयर शिला प्रोपाद इस गिवन अन वेरी वंडरफुल परपोट हम बी कैन अंडरस्टैंड हाउ बी कैन अप्लाई दिस प्रिंसिपल्स ऑफ दिस वेदिक टेक्स्ट्स इन आवर लाइफ इसेंट इट हम सो लेट्स ना ना गो अहेड टुडे इस डे नंबर 29th टुमारो इस डे 30th ना या ना आफ्टर डेट ऑफ कोर्स बी विल कंटिन्यू विथ आवर प्रोपाद डी स्टडी सेशन ऑन डी रेगुलर बेसिस सो टुडे बी विल स्टार्ट विथ डी रेगुलर पुरुषोत्तम अधिकमास प्रेयर सेशन ना वेयर इन बी विल ना जंप इन तू आवर चांटिंग ऑफ ना श्रीमद बघवत गीता चैप्टर नंबर 15 एंटाइटल्ड पुरुषोत्तम योगा ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय चैप्टर 15 योग ऑफ डी सुप्रीम पर्सन श्री भगवान वाच उर्दमूलम् अदह शाकम् अयश्वत्तम् प्राहुर्व्यम् चंदाम् सीस्य पर्णानी यस्तम् वेदसवेदवेद दश्वर्गम् प्रश्नास्तस्य शाखा गुनाक्रवर्त्य प्रवाला अदश्य मूलानुसंततानी कर्मानुबंधीनी वनुष्यलोके नरूपम् सेहत दोपलभ्यते नातो नचादेन नचसंप्रतिष्ठा अश्वत्तमेनम् स्विरूढ़मूलम् असंगशस्त्रेन ध्रेणचित्वा पत्थरम् तत्परिमार्गितभ्यम् यस्मिन् गतानानिवर्तन्तिभूयहा तमेव चार्यम् पुरुषम् प्रपद्ये यतह प्रवृत्ति प्रसरता पुराणी निर्माणमोहा जित संगदोषा अध्यात्मनित्याविनिवृत्तका माह वंदुएर्मुक्ता सुकतोकसम्येय गचंतिमूर्य पदमाव्यमत नदत भासयते सूर्यो नशशांकोन पावक यत गत्वाननिवर्तन्तेत दाम परममम मयवाम्शो जीवलोके जीवभूतह सनातन मणहस स्तानिंद्रियानी प्रकृति स्थानिकर्षति शरीरम्यत अवापनोति यच्चापि उत्क्रमतीश्वर गृहितवैतानी सम्याति वायुर्गंधानी वासयात श्रोत्रम् चक्षुस्पर्शनम् च रसनम् ग्राहणम् एवच अधिष्ठाय मनस्थाय विषयानुपसेवते उत्क्रामंतम् सितम् बापी बूंजानम् वागुनान्वितम् विमूढानानुपश्यंति पश्यंति ज्ञानचक्षुष यतन्तो योगिनस् चैनम् पश्यंत्यात्मन्यवस्तितम् यतन्तो पिकर्तात्मानुओनैनम् पश्यंतचेतस यत आदित्यगतम् तेजो जगत भासयते किलम् यत चंद्रामसी यच्चाग्नोतत्तेजो विद्यमामकम् गामाविष्यच भूतानी धारयामयह मोजशा उष्णामी चोषदी सर्व सोमूभूत्व अरसात्मक अहम्बैश्वा नरोभूत्व प्राणीनामदेमा श्रद्धा प्राणापानसमायुक्ता पच्चाम्यनम् च दुर्विदम् सर्वस्वचाहम् विदिसन्निविष्टो मतह स्मृति ज्ञानम पोहनम् च
Swetcha maya syanatubhutamaya sya ko pi Me she mahi povasitum manasanta reena Saksha atavayeva kimutathma sukhanubhute Jyane prayasam udapasyanamantayeva Jeevan disanmukaritam bhavadiyavartham Stani sidashudigata tanuvan manubhir Ye prayasho ajitajito piyasi tahi Srilokyaam Shreha shritim bhaktimudasyate vibho Krishna thiye kavala bodh labdaye Teesha masavklishalayeva shishyate Nanyadhyata sthulatushavagati nam Purehabhu man bhavopiyoginas Swadar pitehanjukarmalabdaya Vibuddhyabaktayeva katopanithaya Prapaidirenjochutadegatim param Tatami bhuman vahimagunasyate Vibodhumarhatyamalantaratma bhi Avikriyat smanubhavadarupato Yenanyahodhyatmatyana chanyathah Gunatmanasthe pigunamimatum Hitavatirnas eksharisyah Kalina yervagamita sukalpae Bhupamshavah kemi hika duva saha Tattene nukampam susanikshamaanu Gunjanayeva atmakritam vipakam Hridvarbapurbeeridharan namaste Jeeve tayu mukthipadesa dayavag Asheshamena agyamananta agye Paratmani twayevi mai mai ni Maya mitatyekshitum atma vebhavam Ki hum kiya naichchavi varchiragnao Ataha shamasvachutavera joubho Ye jaanatastvat pradagishamani nah Ajavale pandatamu anda chakshusha Ye shunu kampyo mainata bani te Vaham tamu mahadham Tacharagnavarbu samveshthi taandagata sakta vitasthi kaya Pedrig vidavigani taandapananucharya Vataadvarum vivaraswachite mahi tvam Uchche panam garbagatasyapadyo Kimkalpatema dura dukshajaagise Kimmastinastiripadishabhushitam Tavastiku ukshay kietappyanantaha Jagatra yontada di samlabode Narayanasyodaranavinalaad Vinidgadojastviti vannavayimrusha Kintvi shvaradvana vinidgadosme Narayanastvam nahisarvadehina Atma sadishakilidokkashakshi Narayanungamnarabodjalayanat Tachapi satyamnatavayvamaya Tache jalastam tava sadjagatbuhu Kim darshtram bhagavams tadayeva Kimvasudhrishtram hrime tadayeva Kimno sapaddeva punarvyadarshi Atreyeva maya damanavatare Iyasya prapanchasya bahisutasya Rishnosyochantar jadare jananya Maya tum eva prakatikritam te Yesse guksavidam sarvam Satmam bhatiya tha ththa Tatvay apihat sarvam kim idumayaya vina Advayivatvadrtesyakim mamaneeta Mamane te maya atma darshitam Ekosipradamam tadovrajasuhurad Vitsasamastha api Taavanthosichaturgujasa dakilai Sakamayoyo pasitas Taavan te evajaganthi abhusalamitam brahmandvayam shishyate Ajana tamtvatpadanipanatmini Atmaatmana basivitatyamaya Shristaviva ham jagato vidhana Ivatvamisho anta ivatraneetra Sureshri shiri shadrayivanrishrami Tiri akshuyadav sapitayanasya Janma satam durmadanikrahaya Prabho vidatahasat anugrahayacha Koveti bhuman bhagavan paratman Pavakatambakatavyaka diti Vistarayan kriras yoga maya Tasma jidam jagadasheshamasat swarupam Swapnavamastadi shanampuru dukkadukham Twayeva nityasukabodhatanavanante Maya tavudhyadapiyatsadivavabhati Ekastvam apnapurushaha puranaha Satyaha swayam jyotirananta adyah Nityaksharojastrasukoniranjana Urnadrayo muttupaditho mridaha Evamvidam twansakalatmanamapi Svatmanam atmaatmatyaa chakshade Gurvarkalabdo pani shachchuchakshusha Ye te tarantivabavana bhavanrata mudhim Atmanam eva atmatyaa vijana kam Tine evajatam nikilam prapanchitam Jyaneena bhuyopi chathpradityate Rajvamaher bogabava bavoye tha Jana samnyav bhavbandhamukshav Dona mananyav sartagnyavavad Ajashra chityaatmanikheyvale pare Vicharyamane tarana vivahane Tvaam atmanam paramatva paramatmanam eva Atmapunarvahiramragya ahogyanattha agnya tha Antarbavayanantavavantam eva Ye tatyajanthomragyantisantaha Asantam apyantiahimanantareena Santam gunamtam kimuyantisantaha Atapithi dev padam bujadvaya prasadaleesha nugrihitayeva hi Janaati tatvam bhagavan mahinno Najañegopi chiram vichinvan Thastumena tasaboori vago Bavetra vanyatrathuvatirushcham Ye naaveko vibhavajananam bhutvani shivethava pada pallavam Ahodidanya kajugoramanya Stanyam mridam pittamativatemuda Yasaam vivavatchararatmajatmana Yattriptayedhyapinachalamatvara Ahobagyam ahobagyam Nanda gopavrajogasaam Yanmitram paramanandam Uurnam brahmasanathanam Ye shaamthubagya mahimachutatavadasam Ekadshivahivayambataboori vaga Ye tadshikchuchakayarsakripvamaha Sarvadayongri udaja madamamridasavamte Tatboori bagyamayajanmakim apiyatapyaam Yadgo kulivikatamangrijo abhishekam Yajivitam tonikilambhavavanmukundas Vadya apiyatpadarajah shrodhimragyam eva Ye shaam goshnavasinam mutavavan Kimdeva rathetinash Chetho visvahfalatpalam thvavalmam Tvataparam utrapi ayannmuyati Sadvesha devabhutanapisakulla Tvaameva deva pitayada martasuradprayatmatanaya Pranasyaastvadkrute Tavadraga dayasthina shthavatkara grhanggrham Taavanmohongri nigado yavadkrishnanadajanaha Prapanchamnis prapancho bi vidambayasi bhutale pravanjanakananak Sandoham prati tum prabho Janaanteyeva janaantu kimbahuktyanam eva prabho Manasovapushovaachovaibhavam tava gucharah Anjaanihman krishna sarvam twam vechi sarvadhrak Tav eva jagatam naato jagat etattavarvitam Shri krishna vrishni bulapushkarajoshadain Shmani jarabiji pushadadi vridhikarin Udermasharvarharakshitiraakshasadro Akalvamarakamarganbhagavan namaste Shri shugavachayriyabishtoyabhu manam Tri parikramyapath yo Natva vishtram jagaddhat swadhama pratya padhyata Tatono nyapyabhavan svabham praga vashtithaan Vatsanpurinamahani nyayata purvasakam swakam Ekasminnapiyatebde pranisham chantaratmanah Krishna maya hadha rajan shanardham menirerebaka Kimkimno vismarantih Maya mohita chetha saha Yanmohitam jagatsarvam abhikrishnam visvritatmukam Poochuscha surda krishnam swagatam tehtiram hasa Nay ko piyabo jikavala ehita sadugujyataam Tatoha sanrishi keesho abhyavahrityasaharbaka eh Darshayamscharma jagaram yavartatavanadvrjam Barha prashunavanada tubichitritanga Prodham avenu dalashnagaravotsavadya Vatsangranan anuga gita pavitra kirtid Gopi idri gutsavadshipraviveshagostam Adhyanena mahavyalo yashodananda shumna Adovida vayamchashma iti bhalavrajayabuhu Shri rajoach brahmanparodhavay krishni Yanprema katambavej Yo bhuta purvasdo kesho swadva veshvikatyataam Shri shugavach sarveshamavibhutaanam Rbhasvatmaevallava Itare patvittadhyastat ballabatayayi vahim Tadrajenrethasneha swasvakatmani dehina Atatamamata lambi putravittaghadi sho Dehatnava ginamkumsam abhirajaniyasattama Yata deha priyamasatana ahyanu ye chudam Deho pimamata bakchetar yesavunatnavatpyaha Yajyeriyapidheshmin Jeevita shabalhiyasi Tasma priyatmahasvatma sarvesha apidehina Tadartham evsakalam jagat etacharacharam Krishna menam avehitvam atmanam akilatmanam Jagat diitayesobhyatra dehi vaabhati mayaya Usutojana tamitra krishnam stashnucharishnuchar Bhagavadruvam akilam nanyadvastimakinchana Sarveshamabivastuna bhavartobhavati stitha Tasyamya bhagavan krishna ha kim atadvasturupyataam Samashritayepatapallavaplavam Mahatpadam punyayasho murare Bhavamudhirvatsapadam padam 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 padamya padam nadesham Ye tattesarvamakyatam Yatpristoham ihathvaya Tamkaumare harikritam paugande parikirtitam Ye tatsuhuradvischaitam murari Agadanam shadbalajemaramcha Yakthe taradruvamajorobishtravam Shranmangranani tinarokilaarthaan Evam viharay kaumare kaumaram jathurujay Ilayana isetu bandeer markatotaplavanadi bhi Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare hare I will sing the beautiful song Chaurashtrakam And then we'll also try to see the translation today of this song And tomorrow we'll see the translation of Krishna deva Oh sorry what is that Krishna prema mi rada In that way we will complete Yesterday by degrees of Gurunguranga we could complete the translations At least a basic Translation of those verses of Bhagavad Gita chapter fifteen As well as ten point fourteen Of Bhagavatam entitled Krishna's Best Brahma So today we will look at The translation of this beautiful song Vrajay Prasidham Navanitachoram written by Shla Bilba Mangal Takur Wherein Bilba Mangal Takur is actually Asking Krishna hmm that I want to Hold you as a prisoner in my heart Hmm which is like a kalagraha which is like full of ignorance Ah but still I have the desire to Ah to capture you in my heart and hold you in my heart Forever hmm so this is the mood of Bhagavat Takur so let us sing this beautiful song and then we'll see the translation Vrajay prasidham navanitachoram Guhangananamcha dukkulachoram Anikajanmargita papachoram Chouragraganyam purusham namamu Shiraadikaya hirdayasya Choram navambuddha shamala kanti choram Adashritanamcha pramastachoram Chouragraganyam purusham namamu Akinchani vittypadaashritam ya Oru vikshumpadhi ehayinam Enapyaobishana choura idrig Shristasutovana jagatra epi Yadhyana maapi haradshesham Yiruthasarana abharash Akcheryarupona nu choura idrig Shristasutovana mayakadha Daramcha maramcha tadendriyani Pramcha vidvavam sarvam eva Palayati gudradhutodchoura Umbhakti dhanashimaya nirur Chinatsigoramya ma paashabhandam Pinnatsri mambhavapashabhandam Nayvatmanobhakta raghutatuvandam Manmanaketa matarashidore Varagilhe dukkhamayeni vada Levasvahay choura hare chiraya Vajoryadoshodhitam evarandam Karagrehe vasasatahrdaye madhiye Maddhaktipashadru davandananishchalasan Vaamkrishnahi pralayakoti shantantrae pi Sarvasvachoura hrdayan Nahimochayami So I have a respectful base answers to that okay anyone wants to read the translations You can raise your hands and start reading each one can read one one translation of the song Yeah ah Shova Madhaji go ahead I offer my respectful base answers
Hare Krishna Madhaji translation by I don't know translation by Shri Lopropadki Jayi I offer my respectful basis to that for most of the thieves Who is famous in Braja has the butter thief and he has And he steals The gopis clothes and who for those who take shelter of him Steals the sins which have accrued over many lifetimes Hare Krishna Dandadpranam Madhaji
Thank you Sir he is well known Vrajay prasidham navanitachoram he is well known as the butter thief Ah and he steals not just butter he steals the gopis clothes Ah he steals The sins that we accrued over several lifetimes he steals our heart He steals everything that he likes And what does he like he likes a pure heart He likes those devotees who are chanting Hare Krishna Right ah so in this way All right Karbavali Madhaji go ahead I offer my respectful base answers translation to verse number two
Yes Madhaji thank you Thank you Madhaji Dandadpranam
Yes Dandadpranam
Offer my respectful basis to the foremost Of the thieves who steals the streamalita Dharnika's heart Who steals the dark cluster of a fresh rain cloud And who steals all the sins and sufferings of those Who takes shelter of his feet Thank you Madhaji Dandadpranam
Hare Krishna thank you Dandadpranam Ah translation number three um Sindhu Madhaji go ahead he turns his
Hare Krishna Madhaji He turns his surrendered devotees into paupers and wandering Homeless beggar alas such a fearful fearsome thief Has never been seen or heard in of in all the three worlds
Yeah thank you Madhaji Shita Prabhu go ahead fourth one
Hare Krishna Dandadpranam
Hare Krishna Dandadpranam
Where attendance of his name per one of your mountain of sins Such as astrashikli wonderful thief I have never seen or heard of anywhere Hare Krishna
Yeah Hare Krishna mere utterance of his name can perjewan of a mountain of sins Right Ashesha Aga haram viduhu what is it verse Ashesha Aga haram viduhu Right simply by chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamitra what happens Ashesha Aga Right since if you have sins like Um Ashesha that means which cannot be counted by Shesha also Ananta Shesha also Ah Ashesha Aga like Aga Aga Surah represents Our sinful activities even we have so much Ah haram viduhu simply by chanting Hare Krishna what happens all of that will be Cut hmm all of our sinful reactions will be taken off taken away Ah so that is the that is the glory of chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamitra All right now Kishori Madhaji go ahead text number five translation
Yes Madhaji Hare Krishna Shri Lopropadki Jayi Dandadpranam Madhaji Oh thief having stolen my wealth my honor my senses my life and my everything Where can you run to I have caught you with the rope of my devotion Hare Krishna Madhaji Thank you
Hare Krishna Thank you Hari Bodh You cut the terrible nose of Yamaraj you severe the dreadful nose of material existence And you slash everyone's material bondage You're unable to cut the knot fastened by your own loving Devotees right so this is very beautiful that um Krishna actually Right this Yamaraj and Chitragupta they have their diaries of all of our sinful activities Ah but Krishna if he wants he can cut The uh he can cut the noose Of the material existence by simply taking away all of our Bad karmas and our good karmas Hmm in this way we don't have anything to To come back with this with this material body And either to enjoy um Uh pious credits nor to suffer for our sinful reactions Right so the Lord Krishna is able to cut that knot that is fastened Um all the knots he can cut but There is one knot that he cannot cut what is that The knot that is fastened by his own pure devotees Like mother Yashoda tied the knot around Damodara right the udara of Dhamma the the rope means Dhamma Udara means belly ah one who tied Uh the tied the lord hmm by using a rope On his belly ah the lord is not able to untie that knot Hmm which is tied by the devotees ah by their love like that All right seventh one oh stealer of my everything oh thief Today I've imprisoned you in the miserable prison house of my heart Which is very fearful The terrible darkness of my ignorance and there for a very long time you will remain Receiving appropriate punishment for your crimes of Thievery now that you've stolen my heart we know Bhagavat says Ah you will receive punishment because I will never allow you to go out of my heart Right when some when some of us ah when We have come to this prison house right we all have an expiry date Now wherever body will expire at sometime and then we go back home back to got it If we perfected our life ah but Abhilu Mangal Takur is saying oh Krishna you will not have any date When you will be released from my heart right you will always be there I will restore you I will keep you in the core of my heart Like that the last one oh Krishna thief of my everything The noose of my devotion remaining forever tight Will continue to reside in the prison house of my heart Because I will not release you for millions of eons Right so I will not release you from the from the custody of my heart hmm And Krishna always enters into the heart of his devotees And such devotees never allow Krishna to Actually go out of his go out of their hearts such as a loving A reciprocation between the lord and his Devotees I will sing this beautiful song Krishna prema mi rada Rada prema mayo harihi Hmm and this song is written by Jipakaswamy um And the this is the official name of the song is Yogala Ashtrakam Right Yogala Ashtrakam right and the language is Sanskrit so we We'll sing this beautiful song very very beautiful song We will sing this for the pleasure of Gurva and Goranga Krishna prema mi rada Rada prema mayo harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Krishna syadra vinam rada Rada yadra vinan harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Krishna pranam hi rada Rada pranam mayo harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Krishna dravam hi rada Rada dravam mayo harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Krishna gehesita rada Rada gehesito harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Krishna chittastita rada Radha chittastito harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Neelambardara rada Pitanbardaroha harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Vindavanishvari rada Krishna vindavanishvara Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Radha krishnagatirmama Radha krishnagatirmama Radha krishnagatirmama Radha krishnagatirmama Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 hari hari Hare Rama Hare Rama 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 hari hari Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 hari hari Hare Rama Hare Rama 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 hari hari Krishna prema mi rada Rada prema mayo harihi Jeevanenadane nityam Radha krishnagatirmama Radha krishnagatirmama Radha krishnagatirmama Beautiful song Let's read the translation of this song Rada has made a pure love for Krishna And Krishna has made a pure love of Rada Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal Shelter oh I didn't share the screen is it Oh okay All right Okay so I'll read the Rada is a treasure of Krishna and Krishna is a treasure of Rada Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal shelter Rada pervades life force of Krishna And Krishna pervades life force of Rada Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal shelter Rada is totally melted with Krishna And Krishna is totally melted with Rada Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal shelter Rada situated in the body of Krishna And Krishna situated in the body of Rada Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal shelter Rada is fixed in the heart of Krishna And Krishna is fixed in the heart of Rada Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal shelter Rada wears cloth of blue color and Krishna wears cloth of yellow color Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal shelter Rada is the mistress of Vrindavana And Krishna is the master of Vrindavana Life's greatest wealth is Rada and Krishna my eternal shelter Shri Rada shamsundar bhavanaki Jai anantiko jigora bhaktavrindaki Jai nitai gora premanande hari hari bol Hare Krishna so now we will go on to the study of Shla Prabhupada's book Krishna Consciousness the topmost yoga system we are on chapter number two Yoga and the master of yoga so we've been reading here hmm that um Krishna is the master of yoga hmm yatra yogeshwara krishno Right yogaishvara hmm the controller the master of yoga is Krishna himself And which is the best process Ah the best process or the best yoga is as given by Lord Krishna himself is Bhakti yoga hmm that means six point forty seven Krishna says What does Krishna say in six point forty seven Yoginam apisarvesham Madkatene antaratmana Shradhavan vajate yoma samayukta tamumataha Hmm so Krishna says um Krishna says I am yogeshwara hmm the lord of the yoga And the master of the yoga and Ah the best yogi hmm is a bhakti yogi one who engages in the Service of the supreme personality of godhead he is called a bhakti yogi Hmm all right so let's quickly read um okay Shova Madhaji go ahead The concept of accepting God as a son is superior
Hare Krishna Dandadpranam Madhaji Shri Lopropadki Jayi The concept of accepting God as son is superior to the concept of accepting God as a father There is distinction the relationship between father and son is that the That the father always wants to give something To the son therefore the relationship with God or Krishna As son is better than the relationship with Krishna by whom By one who thinks if I accept God as my father Then my business will be to ask for my necessities from the father But if I become the father of Krishna then from very beginning of his childhood my business will be to serve him The father is the parent of the child from the very beginning of his birth Therefore the concept of this relationship of vasudev and devaki is sublime
Hare Krishna thank you Madhaji
Hare Krishna
So yeah that's why the Christians they go to the they go to the church and they say Oh our father in heaven holy be thy name Uh give us today our daily bread right So Prabhupada is mentioning here that if we take Lord to be our father We will be demanding from the Lord oh Lord I want this I want this I want this Hmm but if we consider the Lord as our son hmm then What will we do we will be asking oh what does the Lord want now what should I do for the Lord now How should I decorate the Lord now what should I feed the Lord now Right like that so there's a mode of servitude more when we take the Lord as our son Rather than take the Lord as our father like that Okay so let's move ahead and now Kishori Madhaji go ahead and Krishna's foster mother actually Krishna's foster Mentioned here but Krishna's eternal mother is mother Yashoda Right so yeah yes go ahead
Thank you Madhaji Hare Krishna Shri Lopropadki Jayi Dandadpranam Madhaji
Yes Madhaji
Krishna's foster mother Yasoda is thinking if I do not feel Krishna cement Sompatisously ah he will die See uh she for forgets that Krishna To the supreme lord that he is sustaining the three world Uh she uh forgot so that only one lord is supplying Uh hmm there the necessities of all the Living entities this same personality of godhead
This same personality of Godhead has become the son of Yasoda. And she is thinking, if I do not feel him nicely, he will die. This is love. She has forgotten that it is the supreme personality of Godhead who has appeared before, before her as a little child.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Madhaji. Hari Bho.
Thank you.
So here, it is not that, you know, Mother Yashoda is an illusion, right? So this is the yoga maya is arranging for this, this is vatsalya love of a mother for the child without this mood of oil reverence, right? Because if the, if, if Mother Yashoda is going to have this mood of oil reverence when she is serving Krishna, then this motherly love will not be there, isn't it? That is why yoga maya actually hides this opulence that my son is the supreme person of Godhead. That, that knowledge is actually removed from Mother Yashoda. So that she can behave just like a mother, chastises the child, teaches the child, learns, makes the child learn, runs behind the child. You know, plays with the child like that. So to have those kinds of loving moments, loving interactions between the mother and the child. Now yoga maya actually, you know, puts, puts Mother Yashoda in a kind of illusion. But it is not an illusion because of, because of why we are put into illusion. Because we are independently, we want to enjoy in this material world. That's why we are put under illusion. Ah, but that is not the kind of illusion that Yashoda maya has put into. Ah, so however, now why is everything, everything is that Sam Siddharitoshanam? Everything is happening or arranged by yoga maya or Mahamaya for the pleasure of the supreme personality of Godhead, Lord Sri Krishna. That is the bottom line, yeah? All right. And, and what is most important, whatever we have a rasa with Krishna, whether it is Shanta rasa, Dasia rasa, Sakya rasa, Vatsalya rasa, Madurya rasa. Ah, the essence of any kind of relationship is service. We cannot love somebody and not serve them, right? So the essence of any relationship is how can I serve you, isn't it? That's what it is. All right. Now request Sindhu Madhaji, go ahead. This relationship of attachment is very significant.
This relationship of attachment is very sublime. It requires time to understand, but there is a position where instead of asking, oh God, please give us our daily bread. You can instead think that God will die if you do not supply bread to him. This is the ecstasy of extreme love. There is such a relationship between Krishna and his devotee Radharani, the greatest devotee, the greatest lover of Krishna. Mother Yashoda is this lover as a parent. Sudama is this lover as a friend. Arjuna also as a friend. There are millions and billions of different kinds of direct devotees of Krishna.
Yeah, Hare Krishna. So each one has a relationship with the Lord. Some of them have vatsalya rasa like Mother Yashoda and Madharaj. Some of them have dasia rasa like Anumanji. Some of them have friendly relations like Sudama, Shri Dhamma, Madhu Mangal, right? And some of them have madurya rasa like Radharani, the gopies of Vrindavan, like this, right? But the essence of all of those relationships is service, right? Yeah, Preenka Madhaji, go ahead. So the yoga systems is described here.
So the yoga system as described here to Bhakti Yoga and Bhakti Yoga can be practiced by persons who have developed attachment to Krishna. Others cannot practice it. And if anyone is able to develop that attachment, the relationship will be that he will understand God Krishna perfectly. However, we may try to understand God by a different theories or speculation. It is still a difficult job. We may say that we have understood God, but it is not possible to understand him as he is because we have limited senses and he is unlimited. Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Madhaji. Yeah, so because Krishna puts that veil, isn't it? We were discussing yesterday in Brahman, Brahma's prayers also. Now where, you know, Brahma is saying that I am the most perfected person who has become Brahma, yet I cannot even understand you, right? Because the Lord has to reveal himself. We cannot endeavor to understand Krishna. It's not possible. Because we have limited senses and the Lord is unlimited, right? Hmm, what is that? Chetoh Chetanastam, Ekoh Bahunam Yo Vidhdati Kamaan, right? That means although the Lord is also eternal, we are also eternal, the Lord is also blissful, you are also blissful. The Lord is full of knowledge, we are also full of knowledge. But we have infinitesimal of that Sat Chitan Ananda, whereas the Lord is infinite. So with that infinitesimal senses, we cannot understand the Lord, who is unlimited, who is infinite. And we cannot understand the Lord by theories and speculations. How can we understand God? Sevun Mukhehi Jivadav, Swamivaswaratya Dha. The Lord will have to reveal himself to us, being pleased with our services that we render using our senses. Otherwise, it's impossible to understand the supreme personality of Godhead. All right, we'll end up with Karpa Gavali Madhaji. Yes, Madhaji, go ahead. It is said in the Shriman Bhagavatam.
Thank you, Madhaji, Dandadpranam, Madhaji. It is said in the Bhagavatam that our senses are imperfect, all of them. We cannot understand even the material world perfectly. You have seen so many planets and stars in the sky at night, but you do not know what they are. You do not even know that the moon planet is, though men have been trying for so many years to go there in splutniks. Even, even this one planet Earth, we do not know what varieties are there even in this planet. If you, if you go to the sea, to the sky, perception is limited or knowledge is therefore always imperfect. On that we must agree. If we foolishly think that we have acquired all forms of knowledge and that we have advanced in science, this is another foolishness. It is not possible. And when it is not possible to understand.
Hare Krishna, thank you, thank you, Madhaji. We'll end here. All right.
Thank you, Madhaji.
Here, Hari Bho, thank you, Madhaji. So, so here, as, as human beings, as jivas in this material world, you all have four defects, right? One is we have imperfect senses, like Prabhupada is mentioning here. We cannot, we cannot understand anything with our senses, right? What our senses can perceive is very, very limited, right? Beyond a certain distance, we cannot hear, within a certain distance, we cannot hear, right? Beyond a certain distance, we cannot see. We are very, very close also, we cannot see. We cannot see the back of our neck, we cannot see our back, we cannot see our own eyelashes. Also so much limitation to our senses. So we can, we all have imperfect senses. Secondly, we are all in illusion, right? Because we think I am this body. We don't understand that I am the spirit soul. Although we study so much, we are still so attached to the body, right? When somebody asks, who are you? My name is Meera. I am a chartered accountant, right? Ah, we are so attached to our bodily conception. That's how we tell. It naturally comes to us, isn't it? Ah, you're so bodily attached. So that is illusion. Yeah, we are in illusion, we have imperfect senses. And then we commit mistakes, right? Sometimes you miss a mistake, a proper gives example of how we mistake a rope to be a snake and snake to be a rope and then we get scared. Because we are not able to clearly decipher what is what, because our eyes are imperfect and we are subject to making mistakes. And fourth thing, which we can avoid, but we don't avoid, is a tendency to cheat others, right? Um, we try to, we try to show as if we are so wonderful, we are so great. Well, actually, we are so, you know, timid in our hearts. We are so fearful of uncertainty. In this material world, everybody is fearful of uncertainty, but we try to show as if we are, you know, we are not scared of anything. We are happy in this life, right? When somebody asks, how are you? Yes, I'm very fine, thank you, right? What is fine, right? Every day we are suffering from so many issues. Now issues come and go, issues come and go. And this is what is cheating propensity. This is what is the, you know, committing mistakes, right? Committing mistakes is every time we commit a mistake, right? Because there's some misunderstanding, we are not able to understand certain things and then there is always a fight or something like that, right? These four defects are always there. That is why we cannot understand the supreme personality of Godhead by our own senses. What is, what is required by our own mental speculation? We cannot understand Krishna. Our senses are imperfect, we cannot understand Krishna. So what is the method to understand Krishna? We simply have to approach a spiritual master, render service unto him, humbly inquire from him. Tadviti pranipathena pariprashenesevaya, upadekshantiyane yannam yannina stapudarshinaha. Such a, such a spiritual master can give us a transcendental knowledge because they have seen the truth. So that is the moral of the story. That is the moral and purport of today, right? How do we exercise real independence on Independence Day? Right? Today is Independence Day. We all become independent, right? So how are you going to utilize our free will, our independence by making the right choices? How do you make the right choices? We make the right choices by basing our choices on Guru, Shastra and Sadhu. What has Guru, what has Guru told us? What are the Shastras telling us and what do the Sadhus teach us? In this way, when we make our choices, then we become really independent in our choices because we make informed choices. It is not that we just act like an animal instinct, right? When somebody throws a stone, the dog runs, right? The fight or the flight mode is common even in animals. So as human beings, are we exercising a proper choice? Are we exercising our independence in the right way? So that is what is understood. Our intelligence gets purified by study of the scriptures. And then our, our intelligence can direct our mind and the mind directs our senses. And in this way, we engage in the service of the Lord. So with this, we will end our today's session. So let's see who all we have today and then we will to Hari Nanda Sangirtan and we will close by say two o'clock. All right, so we have Shobha Madhaji, Rameya Madhaji, Nisha Madhaji, Sarlogopeshwari Madhaji, Sindhu Madhaji, not very clear, not able to see you, Shita Prabhu, Purana Madhaji, Karpa Gavali Madhaji, Preenka Madhaji, Naveen Ramani Devi Madhaji, Hemma Madhaji, Kripa Madhaji, Namako Navkishori Madhaji, Enchanta Perima. Thank you all for joining in. Mancha Kalpataloo Gya Scha Kripa Sindhu Gya Vicha. Atita Nam Paavane Bhyo Vaishnave Bhyo, Namum Namaha, Anantagori Vaishnavarndhaki, Jay, Nitaigora Prema Nande, Hari Hari Bol. Namah Omishnu Padaya, Krishna Prishthaya, Bhutale, Prinmatte, Bhakti Viranta, Swaminidhi Naamine. Namaste Saraswati Devi, Gauravani Pracharinne, Nirdisesha, Chumyavadi, Ashakya Deshatari. Jaya Sri Krishna Jayatanaya, Tabhunityaananda, Shri Adwaita, Gadadaar Shiva Saad, Gaurabhaktaarindha. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Jaya Gauranitaye, Jaya Gauranitaye, Gauranitaye, Jaya, Gauranitaye, Jaya. Radha Krishna Chandraraada, Krishna Chandraraade, Jaya, Radhe, Jaya, Radhe, Jaya, Radhe, Jaya. Sri Rajay, Jaya, Jaya Prabhu Par, Prabhu Par, Guru Dev, Guru Dev, Nitaay, Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol. Jaya Jaya Sri Rade, Sharanavatru, Sri Lopropad, Sri Lopropad Ki Jay, Nitaigora Prema Nande, Hari Hari Bol, All Glories to Semile devotees, Hare Krishna. All Glories to Semile devotees, Hare Krishna. All Glories to Semile devotees, Hare Krishna. All Glories, All Glories, All Glories to Shishi Guru and Sri Gaukuru Ranga, Sri Lopropad Ki Jay. Hare Krishna, Dandadpranam to all the devotees. Tomorrow, tomorrow I'm like, I have some, you know, devotees. I need to go to a devotees' house for Vishnu Sasramam recitation and all that. So tomorrow I'll have to go there. So can we, can we keep our session tomorrow early? Tomorrow is the last day of Purushokh Madhikmas. Tomorrow is day number thirty. Can we, can we do it at ten o'clock? Ah, no.
Ah.
Yeah, can we do it at ten?
Eleven.
Is it okay?
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock, I have to be there. So.
Brahmasamita class is there.
Seven thirty, no Brahmasamita.
Yeah, so we can do ten forty-five then. No, 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 we can't do that. Tomorrow I'll not be able to attend that also. Okay, so what we can do is, let's do it at, say five o'clock, evening five o'clock, yeah?
Yeah.
Five o'clock is right, always. So we will do it at five o'clock from evening, meet you all in the evening at five o'clock. All right, Chalat Gurus, Sri Lopropad Ki Jay, Sri Lopropad Ki Jay, Prema Nande, Hari Hari. Thank you.